Order. Rule call.
Bidlack?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Stricker?
Here.
McCarrigan?
Here.
Solomon?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. Notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. No changes here. Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda is required by state law. No matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Have any emergency action? Okay. Closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section 841410 of the Nebraska revised statutes. Consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately.
Mayor and council, just for information, the minutes of the special meeting, there was a typo.
Okay. There's no...
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a second?
One second.
Okay. Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Yes. Claim removed from consent calendar. Counsel to consider and take action on the claim to interlinks in the amount of $14,202.46.
I need to declare a conflict on that.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the conflict.
One second.
All right. Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlack?
Yes.
Phillips? Sorry. I want to do that all the time.
It's a trick.
Okay. Counsel to consider and take action on the claim to interlinks in the amount of $14,202.46. A motion to approve that. Or you want to add something?
Just so that you know, the professional services agreement is part of this, but there's some additional expenses as well. We've replaced a CPU here in the council chambers. It was old and we were starting to experience some failure, so we've replaced that. That was a little over $3,000. And then there's some wildcard SSL that has to do with, it's a five-year term, so we paid for that. And there's two DVDs over at the police department. Computers don't come with DVDs anymore, so we had to buy DVDs and put them on the computers. And then there's some licenses for some VPNs. So that's why the additional costs.
So this is the agreement we did last time, the base plus whatever those services, okay?
Yes.
With the additional expenses.
Yes.
So a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlack?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Okay. Financial report. Counsel to receive the August 2025 financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Long time caller, finance director. Apologies on the ward, I was at home with a sick kid today, so this is what you get. This. I'm going to start on the second page here. And that second to last call in the current month is at the end of the month. That is the cash balance of every fund from top to bottom, general all the way down to health insurance. I really just wanted to point out the leasing corp. That was an audit entry from last year. That's been sitting there all year long. And I was waiting until September to do that, just to clear that out. I wanted to visit with Caroline a little bit before I did that and make sure. What happened was the audit, they do even numbers, they don't do cents when they do journal entries. And that was that, to clear that account out. There was just 41 cents that just like, excuse me, lingered. So we'll take that, we'll take that 41 cents and we'll replace it with a little bit of general fund money and get that back to zero. And then that leasing corp and central garage will get off of there for next year. We don't use either one of those funds. And then the next page is the comparisons for the expenditures, just what we've budgeted to spend and what we've actually spent and as well as what we budgeted to in, in take in and what we've actually taken in. So 92% through the fiscal year, at the top, everything is less than 92%. Department heads do a really good job of keeping track of everything and staying well within budget. On the revenue side, the ones that I wanted to talk about in particular were the environmental services fund, wastewater and water. Those are our proprietary funds. They operate themselves, they fund themselves, and they are within 3% of hitting their budgeted revenue numbers this year too. So another good job by those departments. And then the last page I'll talk about is just the, what we've earned versus what we've spent this year. Talked about it before, special projects is the big one. And that was, we're just sitting on a big cash balance. We've spent a lot of ARPA this year. We spent a lot of the hail insurance money this year. We've got some safe sheets for all expenditures that have come out of there now too. So that's just spending that balance down. And if, on that first, second page that we talked about too, you see their balances still, still like 1.7 million. So nothing to be worried about, but that's all I have unless you guys have questions for me.
On page two, you have your second highlighted item SS4A. What's that?
That was the Safe Streets For All. That was, we had some expenditures for Safe Streets For All. And then we did get our reimbursement back from the, we've got that 79, or 80% of that 79,000 is back in our account already. So that, it took like two days from when I did the reimbursement and got it back, so. Wanted to get as much of that done as we could in this current fiscal year, just for single audit purposes. We're going to have to go through a single audit next year because of the ARPA money. So as much federal dollars as we can get in this budget, the better. Maybe we can avoid it next year. I'm optimistic, but.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the August 25 financial report?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second?
One second.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody? Okay. McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bidlack?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearings. So if you're here for the public hearing, I would ask you, if you're going to speak at that, if you would stand and raise your right hand. Anyone speaking at the public hearing?
Is that you, David?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do you swear and affirm that the statements you make tonight to the city council are true and accurate? Say, "I do."
I do.
Okay. Thank you. So counsel to conduct a public hearing set for this date at 6:00 PM to receive information on the community development block grant program regarding funding the downtown revitalization project. So open the public hearing.
All right. So my name is David Valenko. I represent Panhandle Area Development District. I'm the grant manager there, so I've been putting together an application for the City of Scottsglove to apply for the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, for downtown revitalization. The project service area that we're looking at would go from 14th and Broadway down to 23rd and about a block or two to each direction. The maps, it's not, it's not a perfect rectangle. Basically, if you're available for TIF, if it's a slum and blight designated area, then you're eligible. So it's 14th to 23rd and then a block to a block and a half off of Broadway. The program allows for businesses within the area to apply for facade improvements, in which case they can get 75% reimbursement on. So if it's windows, doors, signs, awnings, those are all things that are applicable for the program. The business will pay the full cost upfront and then the city reimburses through the funds. The nice thing about this program is it doesn't cost the city any money. Basically, the match is 25% and that'll come from the businesses themselves. And we're looking at 25,000 for admin and 10,000 for construction management. That comes out of the grant funds as well. Currently, I'm administering this program in Sidney and Gordon. I actually just came back from Gordon earlier this afternoon doing site visits and construction meetings there. Do I have any questions?
What is the total grant amount?
The total, we're applying for the max that we can, which I believe is 435,000 on the top of my head.
Yeah. That's right here.
Yeah.
So minus the management and...
So 400,000. 400,000. And the program guidelines, and I worked with Shray on some of this, we're doing a cap of, it's a soft cap of 50,000. So basically, sometimes these numbers, because it has to go by Davis Bacon rules, and sometimes the funds can balloon a little bit just to align with the rules. So I was hesitant on trying to put like a hard cap at 50, because you know, if someone goes to 51 or 52, or you have contractors may redo their bids because they have to do a little extra paperwork, right? But then that'll be on a basis-to-basis purpose. We have, I think, six or seven letters of support from businesses within the project service area, businesses that are interested in doing some of these brown shoes, cap and cove, are some of the more, more known names that are interested in it. The mayor also gave us a letter of support. We also have a letter of support from the Community Redevelopment Authority. It's a good, it's a good program. It doesn't come without its challenges. I would say the biggest challenge is that business owners have to have the capital or they have to find a way to get the capital. They do have to be, you know, they get reimbursed the 75%. And you're not paying the entire cost upfront. It's kind of invoice to invoice. But you know, if that first invoice is $5,000, you have to have that $5,000, even if you're going to get 75% of it back two weeks later. So that is a challenge that you can kind of see with this. Dealing with the state historic preservation office sometimes can be challenging on what they want to see as respecting historical integrity. But like I said, the contractors and the business owners I've worked with in Sidney and Gordon so far, it's good success. So it's a matter of really getting the word out, and I, and I think it's a good program.
David, the, the business owners in Sidney and Gordon are taking advantage of that.
Yeah, yeah. Especially Gordon. Sidney has their own unique problems. With Gordon, you know, we're looking, I forget the size of Gordon off the top of my head. But I have eight businesses. They got awarded last fall. So they'll, our last winter, they'll, they'll award us. We'll find out if we win, if we get the award in November, December. Then I start what's called the environmental tier one process. I get through that. Once we get approved on the environmental tier one, then we can start accepting applications or we can start reviewing applications. They can be dropping them off as soon as we get awarded. We just can't look at them until we get past the, officially awarded the money and then, and through the environmental tier one. And at that point, yeah, Gordon, it's, they're, they have a half-mile project zone area, and I have more than 10 applicants. I have three just about to start. I almost did three pre-construction conferences today. The nice thing here is when I do a site visit, I don't have to drive three-hour round trip or four-hour round trip. I probably just walk from my office. But yeah.
How do you decide if there's more applicants than you have money available? Is there criteria you go by to sort out who you award to?
Yeah. So the first thing is it's, it's first come, first served.
Okay.
So you know, $400,000. What I've seen is businesses are usually looking for about 25,000 to 45,000. There are some larger, there's a larger project I've seen that's 80,000, but I don't anticipate anything like that. And we also have a cap at 50. So it's first come, first served. And then after that, we do, we do have a ranking system at that point. If we get to where, hey, there's five applicants left and there's only, you know, $30,000 or things like that. Yes.
So the, there's the 25,000 administration, 10 for construction?
Construction management, yep.
Management. If there's a project, I presume many of them will need permits. Is that, where does that money come from for permit fees and such?
Well, I haven't, I haven't dealt with anything as far as permits. So basically, you know, let's say you're the business owner. You're going to go out, you're going to find your contractor, or you will find someone to assume the role of a general contractor who, that's one thing I see a lot, is if someone fills a role of a general contractor in the sub, and the general contractor says, hey, this is going to cost this much, the sub said this, this, and this. So I don't deal with permits.
So but, so they're just, they're in as part of the individual negotiation?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Unlike with CDVG, I had to play, or with the owner occupied rehab program that I recently closed out with you guys. On that one, I kind of had to play mediator between homeowner and contractor. I had to play somewhat of accountant for, I had to collect all the receipts from the contractor and organize everything. This one's a little easier on me. I don't have to do that. The contracts between those two and yeah.
Is there a timeframe that the money has to be spent by or are they lenient?
They're always lenient with the extensions.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the timeframe?
I want to say it is 16 months from when awarded. I think that's that, but there...
Oh, for each project?
From when?
The whole grant.
Yeah, from when the grant's awarded. I want to say it's 16 to 24 months. Drawing a blank on that one right now. But yeah, there, it's easy to get the extensions from the state though on that. They understand. I'm going to have to be doing an extension with Sidney here soon on their, their own. And like I said, they have their own unique problems.
On the state historic rules, I assume, is it for every building that's over 50 years in age? Is that what it is for? Where are they going to step in?
Just, so I had to do an environmental tier two process as well. And part of that process is I have to fill out a form, send it to the state historic board, send it to SHPO, say, hey, this is the scope of work, this is what they want to do. SHPO comes back and says things like, you can't do a metal awning because it's traditionally had a cloth awning, and so we're only going to allow a cloth awning. Or they say, you can't paint that black. It's got to be, it's got to stay true to the historical integrity and it can only be beige or lighter colors. It could be window frames and things like that. So yeah, the awning is, the awning, in my experience in this project, can be a little annoying as, you know, cloth awnings don't always last, but. But.
Interesting.
And then when would we know? When will they be awarded?
November, December. November, December, and then yeah, then once we get that, then I start the environmental review process. And then I, you know, we post things in the paper and then, yeah. And then we get the award. There's a, there's a specific calendar of this has to take this so many days and this has to take so many days. And I talk about flood zones and it's, yeah, fun stuff.
I think it's a good project.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you guys for your interest in it and the support. And so I'm going to, we're kind of pushing up the deadline. The deadline is tonight, so I'm going to get some signatures. And once the meeting's over, then I'm going to go back to the office and upload and press submit. I do have full faith that we will be awarded, but we'll knock on wood on that. And hopefully the internet doesn't go down.
Sounds good.
Other than that, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
All right. Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for the public hearing? Kevin, do you have anything else you want to add?
Adam? No, we're going to be approving on the next item, so there might be a little conversation.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Resolutions and ordinances. Counsel to discuss and consider action on the resolution authorizing the grant application and contracts for the CDVG Downtown Revitalization 2025 Project and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution and documents.
And Mayor and council, just so you know, Shray is not available right now. So you're going to have to put up with me and I'll be signing on her behalf if needed, but most of the signatures will be yours, Mayor. And we'll need to get that done right after the meeting and so David can slide out of here and submit. So deadline is tonight, so.
Okay.
Anything, anyone else? Any questions?
I just, on, with, with all of the participation plan and all this, the attendance stuff to this whole thing, I noted on page 104, it calls us the village of Scottsglove.
Uh-oh.
And I don't think it really much matters other than in case there's any different qualifications from a city to a village.
Are you, okay, you're talking citizen participation?
Yeah, page 104.
Okay.
3A.
Okay. Yeah. We can probably fix that on the application?
Yeah.
Real quick?
Yeah.
Thanks for pointing that out, Jerry.
I have one question on exhibit D. Residential Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistance Plan. So everything else, I grasp what they were trying to do and everything going in there, but what, what is the anti-displacement relocation program?
It's not. It doesn't.
Oh, no. This is more for...
No one's being displaced, you know? So yeah, we're doing strictly commercial only. We're not breaking ground. We're doing only facade improvements, so no one should be displaced in their home by this project. So yeah.
And this application serves many purposes for CDVG, so.
So it's kind of a standard, one-size-fits-all?
And then yeah, if someone does, is doing downtown revitalization for some whatever reasons, has to displace this, one of those things, we have to put it in there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Have a motion to approve?
Go make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Have a second?
One second.
All right. Kim? Okay. Bidlack?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel to discuss and consider action on the 2025-2026 pay resolution and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Mayor and council, this is our pay resolution. We've talked about this many times, our budget workshop, our budget ordinance, it's part of our budget, but this is the pay resolution. Do you have any questions?
You know, is it a 5%, increase?
No, no. It's, it's different.
Oh, okay.
It's 3% for general employees. It's the general non-union employees, 3%. Fire captains, 3%. Fire lieutenants, 3%. Firefighters, 5%. The police unit employees, police officer got a 5%. And there was a step eight added to that pay scale. And everybody else got a step eight added to their pay scale. And then the IBEW union employees got a 3%. And that was all to keep, outside of the non-union employees, it was to keep them in the pay range that we're required to. And for the non-union employees, we think that that 3% keeps us competitive too. We're keeping the employees where they should be. And remember in '26, we have money in the budget to do a wage study again. We think we should do that every five years, and it's been five years. So we'll do a wage study again, make sure we're where we need to be. Jerry?
I just noticed on page 115 that we have on the, on general employees, both on the hourly scale and the exempt scale cemetery supervisor. Which one are they? Okay.
Let me get to that.
So page 119, hourly, level 20 cemetery supervisor, and then...
19 or 15?
15.
Page 115.
Okay. Could you?
So you see where it says cemetery supervisor, grade 20 on the hourly?
He just wants to know why he was hourly.
Level 23, or grade 23.
We made a long time employee out at the cemetery supervisor. So he's a crew leader. But the cemetery supervisor is an exempt employee and on the other pay scales. So it's two different people, two different pay scales. The overall supervisor is exempt and the crew leader would probably be a better way to, to label that. That's what we had to...
It just seemed...
Yeah.
Any other changes on the pay scale? Anything else besides that?
No. No. You're going to see it again in a minute.
Any questions, other questions or comments on this one? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve? So moved. Have a second?
One second.
Okay. Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlack?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel to discuss and consider action on the micro TIF application for Isabel Moreno for the fitness instructional training Together project located at 1605 Avenue A, Scotts Brook, Nebraska, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Okay. Mayor and council, Isabel is here. And this is a micro TIF application. You've seen, this might be the fourth one?
Yeah, we haven't done too many yet.
Maybe the fourth one. This has been reviewed by at least three of us. It does meet the requirements. In order to qualify as a micro TIF, it has to be an application for a single project. The project is the repair or rehabilitation of an existing structure that has been within the city for at least 60 years. This building has been, matter of fact, it says 1909 on here, so it's fairly old. The project is located and abided in substandard area, and it is. And the project is in a county with a population of less than 100,000. We're well below that. Also, the project, when complete, can be valued at more than $1.5 million, and we're well below that as well. Matter of fact, the assessed value right now is 156,000. And it will be valued, estimated at 446,000 when it's complete, so. Okay?
Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
So I'm Isabel Moreno. I own Fitness and Structural Training Together, which is the only local women's gym in our area. I also own a venue off Broadway, which is also located off the side of Broadway on 16th. Fitness and Structural Training Together has been open for five years. We are, we have about, we have nine trainers. We do have, there is 14 on staff with us right now. And due to the demand of, with the ladies, we have run out of space where we're at right now. We are currently renting a location on Broadway. So since we are so limited, we continue to, having to turn away our clients. We host 21 classes a week. So we are now hoping to expand our classes, our building size into the building at 1605. And so.
Cool.
And I think it's worthy to comment that it's going to be about a $300,000 expense to rehab this building. So it's a nice improvement to a building that's downtown.
And it's become, yeah, it's become a need, just listening to stories from our clients, you know, the changes and women's health is very important and keeping that going in our area. All of our trainers, you know, come in and dedicate their time to help our community. And I think having it, turning, we're actually turning it more into a health and wellness center, not just a gym, that will help us push the nutrition side of it as well. And it will still show the group fitness area, and it will also open us to a 24/7 women's gym site with, you know, different kinds of things like muscle recovery rooms and saunas, things like that for the building to help with women's health.
Nice. Does anyone have any questions?
I just had a question that, when you were mentioning, and I saw the valuation on the Cessar's website, but it's different than, I, I don't want to have any hiccups in the thing. And on the application for expedited review, it notes the value is one eighty five and then post project value at two ninety. And I just was wondering the difference between.
The the two ninety is the increase in a.
Oh, sorry, okay, the increase in value, sorry.
So you, yeah, you'd take the one eighty five plus the two ninety.
Yeah, okay, I just misread it. Thanks. I think it's good to get old buildings that are empty filled with valuable things and so I applaud you for taking.
Thank you, yeah, we consider building and we, you know, but I really want to be able to help just rebuild what we already have or, you know, just go in that way instead of building and, you know, I do have the venue right next to it, so I'm like trying to improve that block will kind of help, you know, give it a better.
On your application, you had that the building has already been demoed, so the inside is ready to go for you. You can do pretty much anything you want. Okay.
What was in the building previously?
It was Sixteenth Empire.
And bless my thinking, just besides doing, getting into buildings and making them, activating them again, that when you bring people in and fill those, then that filters to other places downtown like coffee shops and restaurants.
Yes, and that was something I kind of look forward to, trying to stay in the downtown area, being just kind of being, you know, being able to attend the downtown association meetings, things like that and just seeing, you know, how we, the goal is to bring in, you know, even for like bands on Broadway, being a part of those different committees. I just feel like it's very important to stay in that area, so we went ahead and.
Well, thanks for doing.
Yes, of course.
There.
Any other questions?
There, this will go before the CRA to approve the TIF now.
Okay.
One more step, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance to rezone the proposed lot one, block one, Baumgar's addition from A agriculture to C three heavy commercial.
An ordinance of the city of Scotts Bluff, Nebraska dealing with zoning, amending section twenty five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that lot one, block one, Baumgar's addition, located in the east half of the southwest quarter of section nineteen, township twenty two north, range fifty four west of the sixth principal meridian, Scotts Bluff County, Nebraska, containing an area of eight point seven six acres more or less, which was previously zoned as agricultural A, is now zoned heavy commercial C dash three, repealing prior section twenty five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Anything to add?
We'll read it again next meeting.
Okay.
If you have any on the zoning, do I read correctly, Napa will also be brought in with us, the Napa store.
That's next, but that's the annexation.
Okay, okay.
We'll take in that whole corner there.
Okay.
To include Highland Road up to the ditch.
Okay. Council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance to annex lots one and two, block one, Baumgar's addition, block one, country commercial business park and attractive land situated in the southwest quarter of section nineteen, township twenty two north, range fifty four west of the sixth prime meridian, commonly identified as land northeast of the intersection of Highland Road and US Highway twenty six.
An ordinance of the city of Scotts Bluff, Nebraska annexing real estate platted as block one, country commercial business park situated in the southeast quarter of section nineteen, township twenty two north, range fifty four west of the sixth principal meridian, lot one, block one, Baumgar's addition, lot two, block one, Baumgar's addition. Unplated real estate described as that part of the east one half, southwest one half of section nineteen, township twenty two north, range fifty four west of the sixth principal meridian, Scotts Bluff County, Nebraska, is defined by the meets and bounds in the caption of the ordinance heading, amending sections twenty five dash one dash three point one of the municipal code and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
And Matt, we will take in all of those businesses out there. They'll become part of the city.
Okay.
Napa, Frank Implement, there is an auto repair business out there, High Tech.
And Menards is already in.
Menards is already in, yeah.
Okay. Council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance adopting the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year twenty five and twenty six.
An ordinance of the city of Scotts Bluff, Nebraska to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty five, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, to provide for an effective date and provide for publication in pamphlet form.
And we'll read this for a third time on the twenty ninth.
Okay. Okay. Council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance amending miscellaneous police fees.
An ordinance of the city of Scotts Bluff amending miscellaneous police fees for police services at chapter six, article six, sections thirty three point one and thirty three point two, repealing prior sections of the municipal code, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
This is the third and final reading, so. Do you have any questions? I think they're pretty reasonable increases.
Yeah, they're not that bad.
I know you're going for a criminal history check, seven fifty to ten dollars.
And just good. The impound fee is not really that significant either.
The administration, administrated fee for the impound fees did increase slightly, right? Or.
It was the day we started.
Okay. How did they go up too deep?
That's not that bad.
Okay, okay, so it's still pretty reasonable. We want people to come and get their cars. We don't want to hamper that. Matter of fact, we'd like for them all to come get their car. Right now it's, it's pretty full. Matter of fact, we're looking for another secondary spot right now, so we're just starting.
And what's the other significant increase was if somebody desired private security services, that went from fifty to whatever.
It went from fifty dollars to a hundred.
But more accurately, if I remember right from Chief is reflects the covering the cost of the to include benefits, okay.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, Bidlak?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, petitions, communications and public input. Mayor to read the proclamation naming September seventeenth as Constitution and Citizenship Day. Have any context you want to add to that?
Is there anyone here that wants to speak on the proclamation? I know that.
It don't matter.
My name is Sherry Preston and I am the regent of the local Katodin DAR chapter. And one of the person who's on my constitution committee went around and she's having this done at Torrington and then she's having things done at the Scotts Bluff library, the Torrington library and the Gearing library. And just Constitution Day came about because of the Daughters of the American Revolution requested Congress honor the Constitution and proclaim the citizenship or Constitution Day. So that's why you've got that.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay. So celebrate Constitution Day, September seventeenth, whereas September seventeenth of each year is recognized as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day in the United States, commemorating the signing of the US Constitution. And seventeen eighty seven and acknowledging the millions of immigrants who have embraced the values and responsibilities of American citizenship. And whereas Citizenship Day in the week of September seventeenth through the twenty third, also known as Constitution Week, offer an opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the rights, privileges and obligations inherent in being a citizen, whether by birth or by choice, and whereas new US citizens invigorate and contribute significantly to their adopted country through civic involvement, economic development and by strengthening a shared sense of community. And whereas the city of Scotts Bluff recognizes the importance of promoting civic education, celebrating the contributions of all its citizens and encouraging eligible permanent residents to pursue the path to citizenship. Now therefore, I Betsy Bidlak, the mayor of the city of Scotts Bluff, by authority vested, proclaims September seventeenth, twenty twenty five, as Citizenship Day in Scotts Bluff and encourages all citizens to reflect on the meaning and responsibilities of citizenship, engage in civic activities and discussions related to the Constitution and its importance, recognize and appreciate the contributions of naturalized citizens to our community, support efforts to educate and assist permanent residents on their journey to citizenship. And witness wherever the mayor has set her hand and caused the seal of the city of Scotts Bluff to be affixed this fifteenth day of September, twenty twenty five.
Well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, mayor to read the proclamation naming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Is there anyone to speak about that?
I did receive an email from Jean Anderson, who came last year to speak on behalf of childhood cancer awareness. She unfortunately can't make it tonight. She is not feeling well, so.
Okay. Proclamation Childhood Cancer Awareness Month for September, twenty twenty five. Whereas Nebraska's children are our greatest resource and childhood cancer is a tragic problem. And whereas childhood cancer is a leading cause of death by disease in children. And whereas one in two hundred and eighty five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And whereas forty six children per day or sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety children per year are diagnosed with cancer in the US. And whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old. And whereas eighty percent of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease. And whereas on average, there's been a point six percent increase in incidence per year since the mid nineteen seventies resulting in an overall incidence increase of twenty four percent over the last forty years. And whereas two thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life threatening. And whereas approximately one half of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicity due to out of pocket expenses as considerable to severe. And whereas in the last thirty years, only six new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. Whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, financial support. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer. And whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now therefore, I Betsy Bidlak, mayor of Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim September, twenty twenty five, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I encourage all residents to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause so that so that so deeply impacts families in every community across our country. Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the business promotional event permit for Panhandle Public Health District for the Community Flu Clinic event on October fourth, twenty twenty five, from eight AM to twelve PM. The permit request the closure of the southwest portion of Sixteenth Street outside the PPHD office, blocking eastbound traffic onto Sixteenth Street from Avenue A, starting at seven forty five AM to twelve PM.
Okay, mayor, your honor, Jessica Davis, the executive director of Panhandle Public Health District is here and we have a little bit of practice having done this a few times during COVID.
We do, we do.
There wasn't any traffic during that. This is a Saturday morning. I don't anticipate there will be a great deal.
Yeah, we've assessed the flow of the location and we really feel like this would just provide one more, you know, barrier for any potential crashes. We've met with Chief Brass for a safety plan. We went through, you know, kind of all of the, assessed our layout. We're gonna very heavily publicly communicate what the flow will be before that day as well and leading up to that day. And so it would just, like, like the application states, it would close the eastbound portion of Sixteenth Street from eight to ten is the sixty five plus vaccination part, so I just drive through. And then ten to noon is all ages. And so there will be actually parking and coming onsite and inside, so the facility, so. Yes, we, we do have some experience with it. And we, we have kind of thought through all of our potential concerns and this would be one of just, again, one of the safest ways that we can do it.
And is, is this an event that's free to the people that come? Or do they pay a cost?
They do, like, they have to submit their insurance cards. We do have vaccines for children that would be free for anybody that would come onsite and have applicable vaccines for that.
Questions for Jessica?
So maybe for the chief, so then the westbound Sixteenth will still be open for the other way and a detour around this closure? Or are they gonna try and share alternate on the westbound side for traffic?
We've got a couple of different ways. And honestly, I don't even remember what it was. We talked about, yeah, once they go back and then going out.
Yep.
Eastbound, right?
Yeah, they would go out eastbound on, like, of the northeast side of it. They could exit is how we would have them do that. We thought then if, if we close that off, then there's not any bottleneck right there if they're gonna turn in there. That's why we thought the barrier right there would be good.
I guess my question is somebody that intends to turn eastbound on Sixteenth. They'll have to go around some way.
Yes.
Not a shared, oh, it's, I'll take my turn when westbound's open. Okay.
They'll have to go to railway.
Okay, okay, so blocked. No need to have an auto pit.
Jessica, are you gonna have them go around your building? Is that the plan?
Yes, for those that are coming sixty five plus that will get multiple shots, they'll come all the way around and out. If they're just getting flu, they're actually gonna exit onto railway. We have an exit point there that we're gonna open up and they'll exit out that.
Very good.
And do you pull us off with just your own staff? Do you bring volunteers in?
Both. We have a medical reserve corps that will bring as far as for volunteers and then staff as well that will see, receive training. We have student nurses as well that will be providing support and then our nursing staff too.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
I hope to see you there.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for powerhouse on Broadway to serve beer, wine and distilled spirits at the Kawasaki New Worth documentary, located on Broadway between Seventeenth and Eighteenth Streets in front of the Midwest Theater on October fifth, twenty twenty five, from three to ten.
Okay, this is a little unorthodox, but the powerhouse is applying for an SDO for an event that's gonna be first part of October. Because of timing, they have to have this into the liquor commission by September twenty fifth. So it has to be on this meeting. Unfortunately, Dave and Karen Sha can't be here. They're out of town, visiting family. So I did have him write me an email and he starts it out with family is important. And I have to agree with him. So there will be an event permit for the Midwest on the twenty ninth meeting that this SDO is for. They've, they've had several SDLs for the Midwest and others and they always do a great job, so. I would recommend that you approve this SDO. And I might add that any, anytime we have an SDO that's on public space, say one of our parks or our city streets, we get it on an agenda and get it before you guys. There's a fair amount that I just approved because I have the authority to do that by code. But since this is on a public space, this is why it's on an agenda, so.
Any questions for Kevin?
So while, while if we approve this, we still have the opportunity to get a look at how that space is occupied in terms of.
Yes, and I've seen a map. And it's just basically blocking the street in front of the Midwest, that block. So, yeah, that's, that's it, Jerry.
I just see six foot high fence on either end and I just didn't know what that meant.
The street department has some chain link fence that is approximately six foot tall. And it's because there's an SDO in there and so you want to have a substantial barricade or fence in between where the alcohol can be and the general public, so. And there, we've used them many times before. They're pretty easy to move.
In sections, easily move.
Yeah, they're in sections, yeah.
And Powerhouse has done similar events before, so this isn't new for them.
I haven't had any problems previously, correct?
No. They do a nice job. Most, just about all of them are liquor license holders that do S D Ls do a good job. You know, it's their liquor license, that's it.
Right.
They take it serious.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Okay, reports from staff, boards, and commissions. Council to discuss and consider action on the Article eight, I think that is, Wages Attachment with Scottsbluff Firefighters Local fourteen fifty-four, and authorize the mayor to sign the attachment.
This is information right out of the pay resolution. We're just amending the firefighter's contract, and this will become a part of the contract. So that's all we're doing. This is an amendment to their contract. It's just wages.
Okay. Comments or questions on this? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the amended contract Article twenty-one, Wages with the Scottsbluff Police Officers Association, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Same thing, police department contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Okay.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the Schedule A Wages Amendment with the Local Union fifteen ninety-seven of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
In this, same thing for the I B E W. It's an amendment to their contract to include these wages.
And Kevin, which workers or departments currently operate under this one?
Utility Department, is that what you said?
It's our utilities. It's a water compost facility, transportation. It's all of our workers except parks.
Okay.
And general employees, of course. So water, wastewater, transportation, sanitation.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, I got Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the Second Zoo Support Agreement between the city and the Riverside Zoological Foundation, a nonprofit corporation, D B A the Riverside Discovery Center, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Anybody here from the zoo? Uh-oh. Come on. Mayor and council, this is the zoo agreement that we've been talking about. We probably talked about it at least three times. I know the zoo has been on the agenda. This will be the fifth time. And that was by design because we wanted to get public input if there was some, so. In this agreement, it's initially a three-year agreement. The contribution goes from three hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. This first year, there is a one-time fifty thousand dollar contingency fee that will be held by the city and can be accessed by the zoo by written request and then paid for through our claims process. So it has to meet with your approval through the claims process. It can be renewed. There is a contingency on the A Z A accreditation. We want them to have it within the three years. If they've made significant progress and accreditation is anticipated, it can be renewed for two additional years, so. Okay? Zoo, anything?
And they'll help, the original, with getting to the A Z A. This will help meet those challenges that.
We hope that that contribution to the contingency fund will inspire others to give to that. It sounds like they need either two hundred and forty thousand or two hundred and sixty thousand. So this is the city's effort to
Jumpstart it.
Start that fund, yeah.
So will you be going to other communities and requesting that? Or do you know if that's planned? Okay. Did they? Okay.
Any questions, comments?
Well, I guess a couple of comments. I, there was a couple of things that I wrestled with in the support payment, and it was the increase or ramped-up speed of payment, so to speak, if the sales tax revenue increases. But then on the other hand, we could also, if it decreases, we could decrease that. So I think it's probably a fair trade-off to do that, knowing that it doesn't exceed the three fifty per year. Probably the one that I thought about more than that was the, the, if, and I don't even really want to, nobody wants to think about this, but Section thirteen, the termination agreement, portion of the agreement, the definition of a substantial decrease in reported sales tax revenue for the city, that which is what we use to make those support payments, that it decreases by at least one-third for the prior three quarters. That seemed like, if we get to that point, there's way bigger problems than a zoo. So I was trying, I talked to Kevin, I think, that that decrease is over the period of the three months, not a third per, every month?
Right. Yeah, mainly because our payments are quarterly. So if there is a decrease in a quarter, we have the right to reduce our contribution proportionally. So you kind of have to think about them separately. If something is going on in a quarter to where we need to decrease our contribution, that's one thing. And if sales tax recovers, we can, we may increase it. So if we do increase them, it will be on an agenda, and it'll come before you all, okay? And as far as the termination goes, that would be rough figures, about a two million dollar decrease in sales tax, which would be significant. So you have to imagine if we're getting to termination, we've already reduced our contribution, our quarterly contribution significantly to try to offset whatever's going on in the community. Because two million dollars is about what we ask for property tax.
Have we, do we have that in the previous agreement?
We do, we do. And as a matter of fact, talking to Kent today, the show was us, and the zoo negotiated the May so that it can go above. And, but never more than we've agreed to, never more than three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
So that's what, I think it works. It's just, it's difficult to put in words.
It just, first of all, not knowing where the one-third value came from other than maybe a number out of the air, for as far as I know. It just, the ability to reduce contributions, if we have to, based on decrease, sort of gave me a little bit more sense of comfort on this piece here.
They're both kind of safety valves for us in case our revenues are diminishing and actually significantly for termination.
That's why I say if it gets to that point, there's bigger problems than this. And that should probably already have been resolved, I hope.
Doesn't be very busy.
But would be.
Yes. So.
So I had a question for the board members. Have you guys kind of developed a plan, at least a rough plan, of how you're going to increase the contingency fund?
Not specifically. I know that I spoke about fundraising for members and different activities exclusively.
Mayor?
Can you come up so you can speak in the mic?
And see who we are talking to.
Let me just share your name and.
Yes, Shastin Marshall. I recently joined the board just a few months ago for R D C, so I apologize. It's okay, my moral support here. So we don't have anything specifically, but we've kind of brainstormed on doing some different activities, some different fundraising things out at the zoo where the money would go specifically into that fund, but we don't have those worked out specifically yet, so.
And they do have a strategic plan that you've all.
Yes, I saw they have a contingency plan if things go bad.
Yeah.
A scale, yeah.
Yeah. And they're trying to generate some new revenue streams. There's the benefit October third at the Giving Civic Center, so.
They've got quite a few tables so far sold, from what I could see.
Yeah.
Well, I got to say that the, all the interactions I had, I think you got the right director to make this the best chance of success, in my opinion, so.
I feel like the information we've been provided has just been a lot more clear and helpful in terms of financials and, you know, yeah, a good, seems like a good plan that he's put together.
Very detailed, very granular.
Yes, yes.
He did say that he sent, I believe, the budget to Kevin for this next year.
Yeah, we saw a budget.
Yeah. Planning, okay.
I think this will help the original, we didn't realize the A Z A was so high for a contingency fund, but I think now it's doable. It'll be hard work, but I think it's possible.
Absolutely.
So this will help. Without it, it'd be very difficult.
Yeah. Yeah. I think A Z A is the right accreditation, too. I mean, it leans real heavy on animal care, animal care plans, so.
Maybe a question for the longest-tenured person up at the diocese at the end of the table. Kent, do you know where the one-third came from?
That was a negotiated amount when we did the last agreement. Very similar to the reduced sales tax in the paragraph four D. But we wanted to have a little more control because the agreement we had before didn't have anything, and our sales tax wasn't near as strong as it is now. I mean, I hate to bring that up in an open meeting, but we've had a pretty good run here the last several years. But prior to, what was that, ten years ago, I think? We had some down years with sales tax, and we were, as a city, we were afraid of overcommitting ourselves. So we actually brought up a bigger number, and they thought it should be a littler number, and we ended up working our way to a third, kind of with your thought in mind, Jerry, as well. If this drops a third over three-quarter, we got big problems. And it should be a substantial decrease. I mean, if we're going to terminate stuff, so that's, that was the thought.
Makes sense. Any other questions? Thank you both.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments, questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay. Council reports, information only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting.
I just want to encourage the zoo board members to take credit for all of that. Tell them this is a heck of a fight.
So last week, I went to the six regions, one Nebraska, just because it was free, and there was, I didn't have anything else to do that day, so. But it was good to hear, you know, they really highlighted the problem with childcare in the, not just the community, but the Panhandle, and probably the state and the United States and everything. But there's a, the, I'm glad that we're considering or have considered the childcare as part of the economic development incentive along with the housing because of the numbers of the loss of the financial impact was quite staggering to me. And also what they're going to do is the, the pad, the pad board, I think, is who hosted this, or the chamber, I think the pad board. But anyway, there's a, some Surewood Act, a program, and there's going to be a match, the sixty-five thousand dollar matching grant that they're going to try and raise for the area. It's not a lot, but it's a start for, they, I don't know if they know if they're going to do it for like in-home daycares or commercial daycares or a combination. It's not that much so. It seemed like it was likely for more in-home for people to help get them started, I think. But they can probably let us know as those successes come along to.
I did send you guys the childcare study that N P P V.
Yeah, that was super interesting.
I provided that to them as well, so. That can be shared with whoever.
Anyone else?
Lead meeting next week.
Oh, yes.
So it'll be gone. It'll be in Lincoln.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidlak?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.